Good evening, welcome to the Eastline Board of Selectmen regular meeting of April 5th, 2023. This is following the town meeting, and since we've already just said the Pledge of Allegiance, we'll pass on that. Second is additional agenda items. We need to add one. We'll make it number under new business, three, D-Dog, for appointments to boards and commissioners. Is there a motion to add that?
So moved.
So moved by Roseanne as second.
Sorry.
Second by Dan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's on for the next meeting. Next one, delegations. Anyone wish to address the board at this time? Okay, seeing none. Moving on, lots of minutes to go ahead, so.
Right. Move to approve the special budget meeting minutes of February 22nd, 2023, as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments?
Yes, so I didn't notice, I didn't go back. In the registrar's budget, there was enough money provided for two elections this year. I didn't have time to go back to the check.
Yes, there was.
Okay.
But they, because of some changes, they were a little short, so we had to give them, move some money around.
All right, I think that's all I have.
Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried unanimously.
Move to approve the special budget meeting minutes of March 1st, 2023, as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any comments? Corrections? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Moving on, the special meeting minutes of March 13th.
Yep. Move to approve the special budget meeting minutes of March 13th, 2023, as submitted.
Second?
Second.
Seconded, any comments?
You had a comment for my second bullet. It said that when I asked about the pupil, cost per pupil for Salem, the minutes say that Mr. Newton could not explain why that would be, but he did. He said it was just two different school sizes, and that's why it was not comparable, not apples to oranges, I think is the way he put it, not apples to apples.
Okay.
So this just makes it sound like he didn't know, and he did know, he just said it wasn't comparable.
Okay.
I just have a couple of quick ones.
Yes.
On the second page, Mrs. Santoro enquired about the following, second line, Superintendent Newton's name is misspelled, just a typo, I think. Then, were you just asking about the Salem transit, the Salem rate?
Yes, he did, he was.
Okay. And then, about three quarters of the way down the page, the paragraph begins with revenue information.
What page are you on?
Page two.
Okay.
On other program would be helpful for the Board of Finance, and I wonder if this board could get a copy of what was reported to the Board of Finance?
We could, we could ask to get the minutes from the Board of Finance.
Yes, so it reads revenue information on other programs that are run would be helpful for Board of Finance presentation. So I think that information might be helpful for us as we try to follow the trail here from year to year. And then there was also more detailed information for the capital improvement, their capital improvement plan. So if we could receive a copy of that.
Okay, so that's not much, that's really nothing to do with approval, it meant just additional information you would like?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Well, we're discussing the topic before we vote.
Okay. Okay. Any other, any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then the March 15th regular meeting minutes?
Move to approve the regular meeting minutes of March 15th, 2023, as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Comments? Corrections?
I do have one for my, for something I stated, I believe it's on page three of the meeting minutes, and it concerns the Board of Trustees of the library. So the first sentence can stand, but this, I think it should really, and I wrote this down for Brooke in case you want to look at it, if the board agrees. The board is reviewing the policy on unattended children, and for now voted, they actually voted, that was the whole thing, and that wasn't captured in that sentence. They voted to raise the age at which children may be unattended by a parent or guardian from 10 years to 12 years, so.
Okay, we'll make sure that tonight's minutes reflect that change.
Yeah, that they actually, and they're still going to be looking closely at their policy, but that was a definite vote by them that evening.
Okay. And the comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And then finally, the special meeting of March 27th.
Move to approve the special meeting minutes of March 27th, 2023, as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, approved unanimously. Okay, there is no consent calendar, we didn't get one, provided right by the tax collector, so she'll have one for next one for sure. Moving on to old business, as we mentioned, I mentioned the last meeting, at the Board of Selectmen, it was discussed using some of the remaining dollars in the American Rescue Plan account fund to pay for specific items in the capital budget. These were ones that I looked through, and these are ones that were going to be paid in cash. They weren't going to be in a five-year lease option, purchase option, or 10- or 20-year or a bond of any sorts. So just, these are to review and discuss, and the ones that I identified is, I indicated in the company documentation, was totals of $98,160. And one would be for the self-contained breathing apparatus for Flanders, $7,460. Six self-contained breathing apparatus cylinders for Niantic Fire Department, and with Niantic, as well as the upfitting of Engine 3. And I did include some documentation in the back here that we got from, Kevin got from Chief McDonald at Niantic Center to indicate what that $20,000 would be used for, for the tools, the portable lights, batteries, operated smoke ejection fans and so forth. And that's where that, you know, the miscellaneous hose adapters and appliances, halogen bars, pipe poles, various hand tools, and inspection trips of the plant. So he specified what that $20,000 would be for, because that also was asked for him at Finance. Moving on for the fire marshal, one set of turnout gear for $5,000, and two gas meters. And Santoro brought up that we had already expended or allocated $5,225, I believe it is, to the fire marshal's office when John Way was the fire marshal. That funding is still there, but just that alone and the additional $5,000 for turnout gears, just about enough for the two turnout gears. So there might be a little bit left over, but with the two of those, he would not, the fire marshal would not be able to get the gas meters, so that's why we're requesting $2,000 for that. And he explained the importance of having the gas meters when you're in a building, that's what warns you, you better get out now type of thing, so figured that would be an important thing. Then moving on, Public Works, every year we set aside $25,000 for sidewalk repairs. Looked like that would be a good way to take some money out of the capital plan while still meeting the, what you're hoping to do with the American Rescue Plan money. Public Works, various roof repairs, and again, this isn't for a roof, but this is money that would be put into an account that you can do the repairs as they come up and are needed during the course of the years, and that, and there's more than $10,000, and Joe said this, this $10,000 would definitely be expended by the 2026, which is one of the things. And the same thing with the HVAC pump replacements. That's not for a specific pump, that's for the account, which we, you know, have money set aside for that, so if it comes up this way, we do not have to fund it out of the capital plan, you know, cash. And that all totals up to $98,160. And Kevin, that leaves us with, I think, $15,000?
Seventeen thousand, because I closed.
Okay.
So there's also a PO that I closed for $1,320, so the real number is just shy. It's right around that same number.
And this would be out of the capital plan, $98,160 that we could reduce the capital request for, for actual dollars in next year's budget, so.
So remaining dollar amount is $17,066.
Okay, thank you. And all these were handed, passed on to the town attorney, and we have the letter from Tracy Collins today, basically saying that, you know, they do meet their criteria and so forth like that. So I think we're in good shape there. But, you know, here again, this, these are my recommendations, I don't know if anybody would like to change things or has another recommendation or would like to alter that at all.
I just have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Which, which engine is Engine 3? Is that the oldest one?
No, that's the newest one coming out, where they said they basically had to cut things out of it to make the.
Yes, I remember now.
So, yeah.
And then you mentioned, they requested two sets of turnout gear, so they had enough money for one, but now this will fund the second one?
This would fund, this would be for the fire marshal office, for the deputy and for the fire marshal. Right now, our fire marshal has no turnout gear, so this would be, allow him to get a set for the deputy and for himself.
And under number seven, the Public Works, various roof repairs, we're sure that these can be completed before the deadline?
Oh yeah, within the next four years. Here again, next year there'll be, every year there's a request for $10,000 for various roof repairs, and that's not to replace a roof, it's to address, you know, repairs that need to come up during the course of the year. So the fund, this $10,000 will definitely be moved out over the next, before the end of 2026, when the funds would have to be expended.
Okay, and so all of these then would be, they would not be recurring expenses? This is in time?
Well, they would be recurring expenses, because every year we do put $20,000 in there, but it's, this is basically saving us from having to do it this year. And with the challenges on the budget and that, that's why I thought this would be a good area to put it in. I mean, it's not personnel, it's, you know, it's basically what we do every year for maintenance and so forth.
So in the capital number recurring, we have some reserves, we would use this first. So we would make sure this is fully expended before we went back and used any cash capital. So this would be like, you know, FIFO, we'd use this first in.
Other questions?
These are not to exceed values, correct?
Not to exceed, exactly. This is the, this is the amount that would go there, because we're specifying, this is what was requested in the capital budget, so this is not to exceed.
I'm nitpicking, but the number, the price for the six tanks and the five tanks aren't the same, that's why I asked. If it's not to exceed, then it's no big deal.
Okay. It's not to exceed.
One quick question.
Sure.
Could you just explain what turnout gear is? Is that something you'd wear in a fire?
Turnout gear is what you would put on if you're going to a fire. That's basically the coat, the pants you would wear.
Okay.
You know.
Boots, the whole?
Yeah.
Okay.
Helmets and stuff like that, it's, yeah. And there is, the lifespan of those is roughly about eight to 10 years.
Do they, like, if they're going to, like, examine a fire after, investigate it after the fire, they still wear the turnout gear?
It would depend upon at what point they went in. There might be a time they wouldn't go in, if they felt the fire was extinguished safely enough, but if it, you know, frequently, because the, a couple of times they did have to go in there with gear on, the previous fire marshal would have been when they had the fire on the post road by the old Holdridge's Garden place there, and then when they had the fire at the Midway Mall, that was areas where they needed to get in very, a little bit more quickly and had to have that turnout gear on.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so we have in the motion on not to exceed, so I'm assuming that these are current prices that will hold?
These are the prices that were given to us by the fire chiefs, Jober Gooff, and like I said, well, the ones for Public Works, those are going in every year, so those, we'll get what we get for those, that won't change. But for the fire marshal, I talked to Bill, he feels that 2,000 is, will be adequately able to cover the cost of the gas meters. Same thing with the additional $5,000 to cover two sets of turnout gear. The chief is confident, same thing with the 20,000 for the engine, same thing with the self-contained breathing apparatuses. So they all feel very comfortable that they can purchase what is requested with those funds.
Okay, so the reason I asked, if current prices from the time they got the bids until we actually dispersed the money, is there some money left within our general fund that we could match up with this, or take some additional monies from the unexpended ARPA account?
What we could probably do is, at this point, you know, if it's a small difference, we could probably make it up from their actual budgets, because this is a pretty firm, these are pretty firm numbers, and they felt that, you know, that any differences wouldn't be that significant at all, and they still have some funds left in their maintenance and so forth, and equipment for this year as well.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question or two. On the attorney's fees, this is more maybe an accounting issue, I'm not sure, but, so we expended, I'm looking at attorney's fees, that 25, that we had allocated or appropriated $25,000 for that, for purposes of administering and helping to administer and give legal advice with respect to the expenditure of the ARPA funds, okay? And we've expended a certain amount of that, and there's that $18,981 left. So my only concern is when we did, when you totaled up what is left, you know, is that we still may need to pay them for the next year, that is, the attorney's, for, you know, review of any ARPA issue. But more than that, I was thinking too, it was not just attorney's fees, and you probably remember this as well, it was for administering the, you know, so if you've got any issues in your finance office, and, for example, when you have to report to Treasury or, you know, that kind of thing.
I don't charge the ARPA fund, but I could put some overtime there for my clerks in my office, but I know, so we have, I'm just kidding. So there's still $17,000 left in, you know, the unassigned fund balance for that, so, you know, if something happened, right now, like, you know, the town attorney just sort of rendered an opinion on this.
Right.
If that, if that bill comes on the, you know, our general fund, you know, monthly statement.
Well, and the thing, I asked Tracy, I did ask Tracy about this. She felt, she said, the lion's share of what they were going to charge is taken care of. This, she said, was not that long, because she, you know, she already has sort of the boilerplate of what's allowed, and she, she said, moving forward with this, if we're down to $17,000 after this, we're not talking much more work from them, so.
Yeah, I was just thinking, I just, I guess when we all allocate it, we're thinking definite buckets for everything.
No, I think that was.
So my mind is still working that way, even though I know you have the $17,000.
The contingency is just in the, it's not in the account, it's just hanging out at the bottom now.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, no, Tracy was very comfortable with that, too, so.
That's fine, okay, all right. And then just another thought, is just as, in the near future, it might be very good to get reports from department heads as to where those projects are, and I know, I've spoken to Kevin about this, to Mr. Siri about it, with, let's say Parks and Recreation, there's a lot of money hanging out there, but I think the thinking, for example, for that is, let some time pass, let the summer go, and new director, let's see where that, you know, if there's any significant change in that.
Yeah, I've been talking to a lot of the department heads about a lot of these items. I know Park and Rec has a few, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollar ticket items here.
Yes.
I've talked to Mr. Loken about that. We'll have department head meetings, the quarter just ended, so in the next couple weeks, we're going to meet with the department heads, and this will be one of the topics to try to get this moving.
And as I told Dan today, Jerry, you know, said he'd like to kind of have that first summer to, you know.
That's a good idea.
To see, you know, for the playgrounds, for the parks, where his needs are when he's actually had the experience, because, you know, he came on board in September, so he did not have the, and so we're looking at doing that.
Okay.
But good points.
Yeah, just thinking that we need to.
Sort of move them along.
Move them along, you know, and if it's not going to happen, then that money can be freed up for another town project, right.
Oh yeah, don't worry. And I even asked Tracy how much would involve, she said, right now, she said, so much of it has, she said, the lion's share of her involvement and so forth was during those, when she was working with your committee and the committee, so anyway.
Where we went, we went through the gymnastics of all the analysis, but then we found out later, we, was changed, so.
Well, yeah, but I think the manner in which the committee did that has made this possible, because we were very cautious, making sure, you know, everybody was completely well-vetted and so forth like that, so I think that's what allowed this.
Yeah, it's just made it easier.
And, you know, this is, and we're using it for, I think, even, we always know how the last rule changes all the time, opening up more, I think in the original route, all of these would have passed muster.
Yeah, right.
For sure, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, any other comments?
Yes, under the breakdown of expenses from Chief McDonald, I noticed at the bottom of that page, $5,000 for an inspection trip to the plant.
Yes. They have to take the vehicle to the inspection plant for, the vehicle to the plant for inspection. Oh no, no, wait a minute, no, that's, that's the, that's a trip to go, that's where we have to go to the plant to do the inspection and so forth like that. So involved and spent on. I'm, I think it's, I don't have a definite answer for you on that, Roseanne, I don't, I thought there was something, Kevin, you?
So, yeah, so I believe the truck is being built, don't quote me 100%, I believe Ohio.
Yeah.
So it's not, it's not around here, and so every time a truck's built, before we take delivery of the truck, they check it out first, and the importance of that is just making sure it matches the specs. The last truck they had built.
The two colors.
It was two different colors. The chassis was one color red, and the front of the truck was a different color red, and we didn't accept it, and they had to repaint the truck. But if we, if we didn't go out there, they would have delivered that truck, and it would have been on us. So they go out there, make sure all the specs that they agreed upon are on that truck before they accept it, and they ship it over here, so.
It just seems like $5,000 is a lot of money to go to Ohio.
It's, I believe, at least two people of the committee, and they have to stay overnight, and it might be a little high, we might get some money back.
Roseanne, I, we could get further clarification, if you're comfortable voting on it, though, I can make sure that for the next week, we have a clarification on that.
And we'll have an accurate accounting of it.
Oh, there's no question. And here again, it's not to exceed, so. Expect, you know, if they're flying business class or something like that, we'll take notice of it.
I don't know if you've seen the price of plane tickets, not for five grand.
Yeah. Okay.
So if you're still taking questions, so it sounds like the admin attorney fee cost, we've spent or encumbered 6K, so of that 19K that's left, there's a good chance that some of that's going to come back?
I don't think we're going to expend nearly all of that at all, but, you know, I'd rather, you know, you know, towards the end of this year is where you'll start having that little better feeling as to what you can do with that remaining money.
Just opportunities for next year.
Yeah.
And as these projects close out, that 17,000, you know, these, some of these projects are in the works, so as the money's freed up on some of these, if they didn't spend it all, that 17 will just grow, so.
Because the Darryl Pond project, they actually got to the point where they needed, they had a contract, and then they wanted to have something added to it, something added to what they wanted the consultant to do, and it was an extra, like, $2,300, and Jerry Locken said, how do I do this? I said, well, do you need more money? He goes, no, we still have about $6,000. I said, well, no, then you're fine. I said, you're, no, as long as it's money you already have, that's not a problem at all.
Right.
And that, so I think everybody is trying to be as frugal as possible in this too, so. Any other comments?
All right, so I will move to approve the expenditure of $98,160 from accounts. Number one, contingency administration costs slash attorney's fees, 85700670069. The amount is $20,301. Number two, contingency emergency management pandemic needs, 85700770712, $43,077. Number three, remainder from closed-out projects for the purchase of the following items currently listed in the FY 2023 24 Capital Plan. Number one, Flanders Fire Department, 85-70-007-700-713. Five SCBA cylinders, $7,460. Two, Niantic Fire Department, 85700770714. Six SCBA cylinders, $8,700. Number four, Fire Marshal, 85700770716. One set of turnout gear, $5,000. Number five, Fire Marshal, 85700770722. Gas meters, $2,000. Number six, Public Works, 85700770717. Five sidewalk repairs, $25,000. Number seven, Public Works, 85700770718. Various roof repairs, $10,000. Number eight, Public Works, 85700770719. HVAC pump replacements, $20,000. All for a total, not to exceed, I guess.
Yes.
Yes, not to exceed, $98,160. And forward to the Board of Finance for approval, this will require a town meeting.
You just said 98, this says 96.
$98,160.
That's it, yeah.
Do we have a different total?
Nope, 98,160.
It is 98, because.
Two thousand what? The gas meters.
The gas meters.
Which were added.
Okay.
Yeah, on that thing, too.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Good point, though.
There, there, you have one approved, so just one new, additional set.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, we all set? Is there a second?
Second.
I'll let Dan. You can pick one, you pick it out, but. Any further comment?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for their input on this, it's really appreciated, so. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried unanimously. Moving on to 2B, it's not an action I'm trying, it's just a discussion, or, this is, you know, we had discussed, discussed in previous meetings, for the fire marshal establishing some permit and inspection fees. We've had the town attorney has been in contact with the fire marshal, and they got input back and forth, and this was the, encloses the ordinance prescribing fees and fire marshal permits, for fire marshal permits and inspections. It lists the, all the information that are included in there. You know, of course, just something like aircraft hangers, yeah, I don't know that we have any yet, but it never hurts to have all, and Bill said, and Tracy agreed, you want to have everything in there, so as much as you can possibly anticipate is in there. So this has been submitted by the fire marshal and reviewed and updated, and town attorney has made sure this is totally an occurrence with state statute and so forth like that. Bill asked if it was okay if he couldn't be here tonight, and I told him, fine, because he was out for a couple weeks, so, yeah, so, so anyway, so this is just, you know, if there's any comments or so forth on it, too, but it was pretty comprehensive. In fact, Tracy did mention, he was extremely comprehensive on his part, and, you know, and Bill, you know, being a state fire marshal, all that did help out, so all the applicable statutes are in there. So, no, we've heard that before, any other, any comments on that?
So the fees seem to be appropriate in comparison to other communities?
They're, yeah, they're at the, they're at the lower end of, because we've never had them before, so Bill wanted to start out, we're lower than, than the majority of them, you know, a little below the mid, in, in, in all cases. And the only other town in the area that has not is Waterford, and I know they're doing the same thing this year as well.
Okay.
Moving on, building and zoning.
That was, I'm sorry. Section 5, we said we were going to make a comment about nonprofits.
That's right. Section 5.
Anywhere in here, it didn't have to be a section 5.
It says it right here, is that what you're talking about? Agencies of the Town of Eastline, Eastline Board of Ed should be required to obtain all permits and inspections.
Yeah, 401Cs, nonprofits, I suggested that we also waive fees for nonprofits. Yeah, 401Cs, nonprofits. I suggested that we also waive fees for nonprofits, and everybody seemed to agree last month, or last meeting.
I thought that was.
In the other.
In the other one, wasn't it?
In the other one, there's a comment that says that the Board of Selectmen can waive fees. This one doesn't say anything.
Yeah, down at the bottom, we see on the second page, under Roman number 3, H, the Board of Selectmen may waive any permit fee in whole or in part. Is that what you're referring to, Bill?
Where is this?
Yeah, I see on page.
Which page are you on?
It's under the next, under 2C.
2C.
Last. What we could do is just add that last.
2C.
To section 5, agencies exemption, just add that, that sentence, or a separate paragraph to that as well.
Well, my question for that one was going to be, what's the vehicle to do that? Do we ask people to come in and ask? I don't, so if we're going to try to tie the two documents together, my question would be, what would the vehicle be if somebody, if we were going to have a, whoever, 401C group that asked to get one of these fees waived? Do they come before the board?
No, that would be done downstairs. I mean, I.
It says Board of Selectmen, right?
Yes.
Well.
It does.
I wouldn't mind doing that, because I could seriously hold up a project.
I don't disagree. It just says Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, that's what, we're doing Fire Marshal.
Yes. But, but here again, we're looking at the last paragraph of the building one, which seems to address the thing for nonprofits.
Yeah, so we're looking at the building.
Yes, the verbiage in the building one, they're suggesting we incorporate that into the Fire Marshal one.
Right, yeah.
But it just says can be waived by the Board of Selectmen.
So it's just, it's a waiver provision, not specific to.
And there's no vehicle to actually execute.
Okay.
Oh, so have that, I understand what you're saying now, okay.
How about, how about if we, instead of the Board of Selectmen, we make it the First Selectman? Because then at least it comes through, and then they can.
But I just, I just want, whatever the vehicle is, that's the way to actually perform.
Yeah, because that, that makes it, Dave, this isn't, we're talking Fire Marshal. Dave, if you want to come up to the microphone, Dave, would that simplify it if we put First, First Selectman vice Board of Selectmen?
Yeah, actually, I think it would help out tremendously and cut down on the timeframe.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll add.
That language, too.
We'll add that language.
To both documents.
Yeah, so.
So you have to do both.
Yeah, so basically, the last paragraph, like, we add a paragraph to section 5, agencies exempting fees, exceptions, and then the First Selectman may waive any permit fee in whole, et cetera, you know, that last thing, and just change Board of Selectmen to the First Selectman, and then on the last few words where it says, when the First Selectman deems it in the public interest to do so.
Okay.
Okay, we'll just add that.
So to the bottom, section 5.
Brooks got, Brooks got that, so. And what I'll do is I'll make sure I run this by town council tomorrow. And then what we'll do is amend this, and then get it, and we'll find that in a little bit, too, so.
So this is covering both building and zoning?
Well, no, right now, we're just doing fire.
Fire.
We're still on the fireworks.
But we're still on fire.
But we're taking language from the fire.
But we're taking language.
To put it into the zoning.
We're taking language from the building fee and putting it, adding it to that.
At the end of section 5, right?
Yes.
You take H from zoning and put it down at section 5.
Yeah, so that's what I was looking at, was 3H, and everybody else seemed to be on another page.
No, no, because we're still looking at the fire.
We're still on the fire.
Parallel processing. Okay, so, so my question along that line, did, did the town attorney suggest that instead of waiving it for nonprofits, he puts the, that we put the verbiage in there saying at somebody's discretion?
No, we're going to run that by them tomorrow to make sure that they're okay with that.
But, yeah, but, but this is, this is getting the First Selectman approval. Is there a reason why we wouldn't just waive it carte blanche for nonprofit 401Cs?
I suppose it'd be better to have a check. I mean, carte blanche, because you, you know, there's a lot of 501Cs that really kind of wouldn't fit, that really wouldn't, you know, wouldn't have it. Like Blue Door, I'd have no problem with, but there are some where they have a staff that is paid and so forth like that, so there would be those.
Yeah.
And I think that it does.
I think it warrants having discretion, but I think it makes sense.
Yeah, I do, too. Well, some oversight.
Not just a blanket.
Yeah. My only concern would be if somebody comes in and says, "Well, you're not uniformly applying it. You gave it to them. How come you didn't give it to me?" That's.
Okay, and if, we can't, what if, every situation. I think we've done everything we possibly can to be as fair as possible. So, you know, that's it. So we'll just, very good point, though, to get that over there, because you did mention it, and we all agreed with it.
Right.
That'd be a good idea. And I would think the majority of nonprofits would qualify. Okay. And then I'll, we'll email everybody tomorrow once I hear back from the town attorney, but I'm sure it'll be fine. Now we'll move over to the building one, for building and zoning permission. I think we've already done this. Yes.
Are we going to include the?
Dave, you've been here a couple times. Thank you for coming back tonight, and, and any questions for Dave on this? We've seen these a few times. As he said, we were at the rock bottom. Now we're, we're not at the top. We're a little bit below the midway point on this to address building fees and demolition permits and so forth. And this, and we'll just make that change to the, to the bottom. And you did, you spoke to town council on this, too?
I absolutely did, yes.
Okay. Any questions for Dave? Okay, just to let you know, this past Saturday, because both our Fire Marshal and Building Inspector are quite busy, they came in on their own time to help get things done down at the Niantic Theater, to get things done, because they're working hard down there. And they didn't want to actually not do other work to move this to the top, so they came out on a day off, the both of them, just to help out and make sure they're getting it along and right. As of now, all the permits have been signed and issued, correct?
Correct.
Good, thank you.
And we're moving forward, which is always nice, so. And they should make their target deadline, I think, was April 28th for the show.
Yeah, I think that we can.
Oh, wow. That's great. Thank you.
But thank you for.
Oh, yeah.
And Bill Bundy, and, and Bill Mahal, and everybody for everything that they've done. So thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay, so now that we've got these two done, we need to have two public hearings, but we can, the plan will be, and, and you.
I have the.
Has them right there. The plan is, right now, once these are, we could set the 19th, April 19th, as the date, because we need 10 clean days, which means the day it's posted and the day of the hearing don't count. So I've talked with Karen, Town Clerk's Office, Karen and Brooke. If we pass this tonight, what they'll do is they'll get it in the paper. It'll either be in Friday or Saturday's paper, which give us those 10 days. And what we'll do is then we'll have a public hearing prior to our next meeting, and it has to be two separate ones, because there are two separate ordinances. And then after that, we receive that, then we would actually vote on it. After that, if we approve it, then post it, and then goes into effect, I think, 10 days after it's posted in the paper and so forth. So if you want to go ahead and.
Sure. Okay. Let's move closer here. Okay. Notice is hereby given of a public hearing to be held by the Eastline Board of Selectmen on Wednesday, April 19, 2023, at the Eastline Town Hall at 108 Pennsylvania Avenue, Niantic, Connecticut, beginning at 7:00 PM, to receive comments regarding the following ordinance entitled, Ordinance Prescribing Fees for Fire Marshal Permits and Inspections. Said ordinance proposes the issuance of permits and the imposition of fees by the Fire Marshal's office when conducting state-mandated annual inspections of certain businesses and the review of construction plans and structures within the town. Copies of the proposed ordinance are available for review in the Eastline Town Clerk's Office and on the Town of Eastline website, www.eeltownhall.com. Interested persons are invited to attend and be heard, dated at Eastline, Connecticut, on this fifth day of April 2023, Eastline Board of Selectmen.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, carried unanimously.
Okay, and notices hereby given of a public hearing to be held by the Eastline Board of Selectmen on Wednesday, April 19, 2023, at the Eastline Town Hall at 108 Pennsylvania Avenue, Niantic, Connecticut, beginning at 7:00 PM, to receive comments regarding the following proposed amendment to section 150.015, Ordinance Prescribing Fees for Building and Demolition Permits. Said amendment replaces the valuation method for calculating building permit fees and demolition permits. Copies of the proposed amendment are available for review in the Eastline Town Clerk's Office and on the Town of Eastline website, www.eeltownhall.com. Interested persons are invited to attend and be heard, dated at Eastline, Connecticut, on this fifth day of April 2023, Eastline Board of Selectmen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second. Comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, carried unanimously. Discussion. Next thing is the EMPG grant. We not too long ago knew about this, and for $154.10, actually $11, because it would have to, if it was $999.99, we wouldn't have to do this. So basically, this is, this has been given to us from the chief emergency manager director. He explains what it's, the money's coming from. It's going to $9,231 of the $10,154.10 of the grant is funding to cover portions of emergency management salaries, and the remaining $923.10 is 100% reimbursable funding for personal protective equipment. And the dates are there, purchased here. Here again, this is, the requested amount will be reimbursed by this grant totally, so there's just basically, we're basically moving the money to, so we can get it reimbursed, so there's no cost to the town. Mike, do you have anything to say on that? Or are you, that's really not your field, is it?
Yeah.
That'd be the chief. Well, where is he? Never mind, okay. Any, any questions on this?
Yeah, so I guess this $10,154.10, so does the town expend it first, and then we get reimbursed by the grant? Is that what's going on?
Basically, that's what happens. Over the course of the year, we expend the money, and then we get the grant to reimburse ourselves.
Okay.
So we get a full reimbursement for it, is what we do.
Okay, so this is saying, okay, we're going to expend this money now, and then we get the grant and pay ourselves back with the grant.
Yeah, well, the grant, we, as I said, we've, we notified, of the grant, back in February this year, we were notified we got that grant to reimburse us.
So we've already.
Yes.
Spent the money. I understand now.
So the $9,000 is the deputy EMD's salary.
Salary, yeah.
So we already, we already expended, you know, more than $9,000, so.
Yeah.
This is literally just revenue in the general fund.
That's what it is.
To pay off for some of the expenditures.
Okay. Any other questions?
Okay, move to approve the special appropriation in the amount of $10,154.10 to revenue account 01-08-800-843. Other requested funds of $9,231 will be utilized to cover a portion of the emergency management salaries, parentheses, 01-25-214-100-311, deputy EMD salary. And $923.10 is funding for personal protective equipment, parentheses, 01-25-214-300-320, miscellaneous supplies, purchased between 10/1/22 and 9/30/2023, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. Note, this requires a town meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. And any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, carried unanimously. And the last one is just a little bit of housekeeping. Now that we've.
Before we leave this topic, is this something that's renewable every year?
Yes, it comes in every year.
Yes, yeah.
And this is where if the recommendations from charter revision are passed, it won't come to us anymore. Because it's a grant, a yearly grant that goes back to, yeah, so. Okay, moving on, for the, just a little bit of housekeeping with the new director, Parks and Rec Director, he worked with Kathy as she was going out, to come up and kind of, you know, clean up the community center rental form, adjust the fees a little bit, and also to make sure, and here again, Bill, it does address very nicely your concern for fee application, that requests to waive fees may be made to the First Selectman. And it does specify, you know, civic clubs, organizations, nonprofits, so it does, you know, the old one had the program director Hannah, who was left for another job. She got the assistant Parks and Rec Director, Nina Mas, it had her name in it, so this is kind of sanitizes the names and so forth, so it's all set to go. Any questions on it?
Yes.
Yes.
On, let me see, these pages aren't numbered, unfortunately. It's, I think, the third page, coming down to about three quarters of the way down, additional rules, consumption of alcoholic beverages.
Uh, okay.
Yeah, about two-thirds down the page, yeah.
Yes, okay. So consumption of alcoholic beverages is prohibited. That should be period. We've had this discussion numerous times over the year. We've got public, we've got public facilities in town where they're licensed, they're in charge of alcohol, and I do not feel that it's appropriate in a public building, and I don't think with the number of lawsuits that are going on, that we need to be waiving the consumption of alcoholic beverages. I was surprised to see that last part phrased, because it has, in the past, been consumption of alcoholic beverages is prohibited, period.
Do they normally have alcoholic beverages?
No, it's, it's never been, it's never, it's never been done.
And that request hasn't come before us.
No, it's never come before us.
Because it hasn't been there before.
Right.
Yeah.
Good catch. I agree with you.
So I certainly, as a member of the Board of Selectmen, don't want responsibility for this. And I just feel that, as I said, we have any number of facilities in town. If you want to have some kind of a party or something, go to one of those facilities and support them. They've got licensed bartenders. We would have no control, really. What are we going to do? Are we going to be interviewing bartenders for this?
Well, first of all, I don't think the Board would ever waive it, anyway, but we can just, we'll just say consumption of alcoholic beverages prohibited.
Yes.
Yeah, just take it out.
Yeah, just take it out, yeah.
Okay, period, huh?
Period, yeah.
And then I'll just, you know, I'll contact Jerry, Kathy may even be in for now, but I'll let you know tomorrow, so. Okay, any other?
And still on that page, again, that's stated in here, as we just talked about the other ones, that the requirement of insurance may be waived. I would hope that that would not happen very frequently, because, again, we all know the state of litigation these days.
Mm-hmm.
Payment of fees. Users are required to pay the room fee and associated extra cost five working days before the start of the event. If, then we go down to the second paragraph. If paragraph is not, if payment is not made within 30 days, the user will be liable for an interest charge. Well, if they haven't paid the fee, how are they going to use the facility?
They're talking about if after you're paying, basically.
Users are required to pay the room fee and associated extra cost five.
I'll tell you what, let's, let's table this, and I'll send it back to them. How's that?
Okay.
Okay.
I just have a quick question.
Okay.
On the waiving of fees, so if, like, the DTC or RTC have a meeting there, is there a fee associated with that?
No, there normally is. Unless, the only time there would be is if the custodians, if we had to hire a custodian. Because that's even for, even for nonprofits, some during, would do it where they have to open up on a.
Like a special Sunday.
Which would require the hiring of a custodian on overtime. They would just pay the cost associated with the custodian. So for most, for town agencies, commissions, you know, same thing with the town committees and that, there's no charge.
Okay, so would the, like, the RTC or DTC be considered then, like, a town agency then? Is that what you're, I'm just trying to figure out where it would fall in there, just so that.
I think other civic clubs or something like that, because I think that's where I would, I think they would fall, you know, civic clubs or organizations. But they've never, ever paid before.
Oh, okay. All right, I see it.
Yeah.
Yeah, number two.
Okay, number two, okay, understood. All right, thank you.
Okay, let's send it back to them, and we'll just do it for another meeting.
All right.
Well, before we leave that.
Okay.
What is our recommendation on this issue on the insurance, though? I mean, we're going to send it back to them.
I'll tell, I'm telling, look, I'm going to tell them we have a lot of areas where there's concern.
Okay.
To address them.
All right.
Can I just add one thing, Kev? I could send this to our representative at KERMA, and they could take a look at it. Remember, they have a contract specialist in the house? It's free for us.
Let's let them do it.
Okay.
Because, you know, we keep taking, they know how to contact KERMA, too. And that's, you know.
I can do it for it.
So, okay, moving on to the next agenda item, 3A, a part-time grant writer position. I mentioned this, because there are numerous grants available at the state and federal level that, you know, we've become aware of, but, you know, it's just, you know, we're no longer utilizing that service that we were paying a couple hundred dollars a month, because it just, you know. because it just, you know, unfortunately, you get what you pay for sometime. And not that they weren't trying to help us out, but, you know, we weren't getting them in a timely fashion. And I think if we have a dedicated part-time grant writer to identify and prepare grants, which the town may qualify, would be, you know, something that would help us out. Current thoughts is to explore the establishment of a 12-hour-a-week position at a rate of pay to be determined. We have just hired a curator for the Samuel Smith, for the Smith Harris House for Brookside Farms. That person also has grant writing experience in the past, was a grant writer. So I'm going to talk to that individual to see if they'd be willing to possibly pick up some more hours to look at doing this, too. And I've also reached out to a couple of nonprofit, where people had worked for nonprofits that did grant writing to, you know, they'd offer up their expertise to help develop a job description and, you know, if it came down to it, help out with interviewing people for the position as well. So is this something that, Roseanna, I know you've been opposed to this from the start, but.
It's only been 10 years.
Yeah, I know. I know, but if there's a failure here and, you know, the amount of money we were talking about would probably be in the vicinity of $15,000 a year, which I think would be more than recouped with grants we would get because the person usually, the administrator of a grant, which is a person prepares and gets, you know, gets the award, is able to set aside some funding for themselves, you know, basically for their time as well. So if there's any input or anything like that, just please reach out to me, send me an email or give me a call. But I'll continue working on this and hopefully over the next month or so, we'll have somebody in that position.
I'd just like to further comment on that. Our recent grant that we received for the Historic Cemetery Commission, we only were, nobody was even aware of the grant possibilities. And somebody who's on the commission who doesn't even live in town found out about it for the town that he does live in and notified us. And I didn't think that we would, I thought it was very nice of him because it's a competitive grant.
Yep.
So just by accident, we found out about this and it's a consumable sum of money and we got it.
Yeah, we got $5,000. We got what we asked for.
If you've got somebody that knows the language and the buzzwords, you've got somebody that's going to research for them, then you put together a committee to do, to do the grant and to do the actual specific work. But the problem is finding them.
Well, usually a grant writer, yeah, they'll have the resources and know, they have, you know, most of them have dropped, you know, they drop things into the box because they do it and know exactly what to do, to say, so. Bill, you started saying something?
Do we have any contract labor as opposed to town employees? It seems like 12 hours a week doesn't feel like a town employee. It feels like somebody that's on contract.
Well, it's not really, but here again, I think it's someone that has scheduled hours, comes in and you're able to sit down and you have, you know, contracting work is, you know, I'll get to you when I get to you and I couldn't get to you this week because I've been busy elsewhere. I think this is someone that we have to make sure we have a little bit of control over. And that, because if it's contract work, you sign the contract and, you know, gee, they haven't heard from you for three weeks. Yeah, that's the only concern I have.
I think this is a good start.
Yeah.
This is one budget year. If it doesn't work out, then we try something else.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's why, that's why I was thinking contract work, because if it doesn't work out, it's easy to not renew the contract. Where if they're a town employee, it's harder to.
Not really. Not a part-time like this, you just wouldn't find the position anymore. And, you know, at 12 hours a week, you're not even having to, because once you get above like the 20 hours, even though you're not qualifying for benefits, you do start qualifying for, you know, sick time, vacation time. And this would not qualify for any, anything like that, so. And I think, I think a contract would be even more expensive, too. And here again, you know, one of the enhancements to this would be if they get, the more grants they get, the more resources they would have for themselves, too. And if they're getting to a point where they're getting, you know, we could look at, you know, I think, I think this is just a start because we've never done it before.
I think it's a good approach. I think having someone here, it's just certain hours and that's the only thing they're going to be focusing on. Like you say, the contract work, you're going to be competing with other jobs that individual might have, so.
Exactly.
Sounds like a good approach. They pay off and then we want to expand it, maybe, if we get results.
Let's hope so.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, next one is May 8th. Schedule the annual town meeting. Should have a call for that.
Yes, Town of East Lime. Notice of annual town meeting. Notice is hereby given of the annual town meeting to be held on Monday, May 8th, 2023, at the East Lime High School Auditorium at 7:00 PM to act on the following. One, to review and discuss the budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, as recommended by the Board of Finance. Subsection A, in accordance with Chapter 7.3 of the Town Charter, the moderator shall adjourn the annual budget meeting to a referendum on the voting machines. The budget resolution will be submitted to the persons qualified to vote in a town meeting by referendum, by machine vote, which referendum shall take place on May 18, 2023, at the East Lime Community Center from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Number two, to adopt a five-year capital plan. And number three, to conduct such a business as may properly come before the meeting, dated at East Lime, Connecticut, this fifth day of April, 2023, East Lime Board of Selectmen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, if I am. All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried unanimously. Next one, electronic citation grant. Yesterday, we got a kind of a, hey, do I have time to get this on the agenda? For Mike, yeah, considering what this is, you've been trying to this. Mike, why don't you get up and explain what this is and.
So that was going to be my first statement tonight, was apologizing for getting it on. But, you know, we know how the state works and I just found out about this at the end of last week on my days off. So when I came in Monday, I finally got this grant back. And of course, you know, their timing couldn't be better because I also had the vendor stating that they have an increase in pricing coming up soon. So, anyway, so since 2019, I've been working on this grant sporadically over time because it dealt with, you know, Department of Transportation, federal funding through NHTSA to come down and the state was looking at finally getting every police department actively utilizing the electronic citation or e-citation is probably a more familiar term you may have heard on the news. So essentially, right now, what officers do is they handwrite traffic citations if they pull somebody over, speeding ticket, a traffic light. What this does here is it takes the handwritten part away and all the information that they're already inputting into the mobile data terminals, the computers in the cars, gives them the ability to transfer that data over to the e-citation and print that out right in the vehicle and then they can then hand the operator the citation there. So what this grant is covering is all of the hardware that's required for the e-citation process. Jump down here. So in order to outfit the 14 Mark Cruisers we have, I was able to secure a grant through DOT and through the federal government for $17,558. That'll take care of the 14 printers, associated equipment, i.e. the cables, mounts, everything to that portion. The only thing that's required by us in the town is that we procure the three-year extended warranty on the printers itself within our department budget right now through computer maintenance. I do have the funds for that. That's a $2,300, three-year maintenance contract for the extended warranty. So that was the only, the only caveat to getting this grant here. So with that, you know, there's a lot of enhancements. If you recall, I came to you guys a few years ago for a special appropriation to upgrade our mobile data terminals in the cars. One of the features that we incorporated into that, which was an officer safety issue, was the ability to put the license scanners on the side. So you can, that barcode that's on the back of your driver's license, the officer can just run that by the scanner. It extracts the pertinent data from your, from your license and puts it into the call. This is that last, basically, that last element to that whole upgrade that I was looking to do for the, for the vehicles. And again, an officer safety issue. So if you think about, you know, if you're in a parked car, right? You pull over and you decide, because you received a text from somebody and maybe it's a child or something. It's taking you 30 seconds, 45 seconds to reply that person. Your head's down the entire time. Think about an officer who's on the side of the road at a motor vehicle stop, has no idea who that individual in the vehicle is. Their head's now down for two to three minutes, you know, sporadically looking up to make sure that, that person has not gotten out of the vehicle and, and coming at them. This takes that whole portion out of it. It also speeds up. That was the other issue that I brought up during the appropriation for the MDTs. It speeds up the process of motor vehicle stops, so we're cutting even more time off it. So again, reducing it down to that number I was basically telling you about a couple of years ago when we got into it. I wish this had come to fruition a little bit sooner, but we're here now, so that's where we're at.
Questions for Lieutenant?
Is all of this equipment transferable into a new vehicle?
It is, yes.
Which hopefully will begin.
And that's what, and that's what's occurred. So even this, this past year, I was able to, because equipment's much newer with, with the Cruisers, I was able to take equipment out of one vehicle that we decommissioned and put that into one of the brand-new cars. So the computers, all that, because they're all within, only a couple of years old, excuse me. So we have been able to transfer that. I've been trying to, you know, save, save us, save the town, the taxpayers money on any corner I can as far as that goes. Hence, another grant that I've basically gotten us.
Looking for, never mind. Dan, go ahead.
So we already have all the computers in the vehicles. We did that before.
Correct.
And this is a logical enhancement in addition, using the information that's already going to be in the computer.
Right.
And scanned from the licenses. So there was an interesting point you made where, you know, the officer, his attention isn't, or her attention isn't being diverted from, you know, the person they pulled over, looking down, trying to write out, handwrite a ticket. This will do that part for them.
Correct.
It'll generate that, so it's going to reduce the amount of time for the traffic stop, which would increase the safety of both the officer and the person being pulled over. Am I right?
Absolutely. And one other thing, you know, to mention about that, right? We're all human. So as we're going down this very long, skinny document and we're writing, and I'm getting a little bit older, so I have these, and if I forgot these, and there's been times I've done it and I know every officer, and Kevin, I'm sure you've done it, is you get about three quarters of the way through writing out that citation and you put something in the wrong area. You've got to start all over again, right? So then.
And then void out your ticket.
So, correct. So the next step is now I have to void that ticket out because that, all that's tracked by Centralized Infraction Bureau. I then have to go back to the PD. Then you have the admin staff. The other benefit to this, and again, it's another time saver on the administrative staff-wise, right? So at this point, we're taking all those paper tickets, so every officer, turning those in and then a transmittal has to be handwritten out with every ticket number, every individual's name, every charge. This automatically uploads this to Central Infraction Bureau and takes away that whole court transmittal process. It does an electronic version. So what we can do once a month, just like the traffic stop data, all that stuff is automatically uploaded to the state for accounting purposes. So what we can do is when we get court dispositions back, say, from a basic arrest that occurs on the side of the road, not a motor vehicle thing, but an arrest, we get that documentation back and that goes into our, our record management system also. So this is just one more step. So as they do those, they can go over, look at the transmittal and all they have to do is account that, yep, everything went up. And our records management system tells us if there's an issue with that transmittal and it didn't happen to upload to CIB, which we can then address and correct quickly. Our records management system already has this built into it, so I don't have to add any component to that. That's, again, another appropriation I came to you guys for years prior to the, to the MDTs. So every component's in place. This is literally the last piece of that large puzzle that I've been working on over the past several years. And again, at a very nominal cost to the town, again, it's something that's already in our budget, the three-year warranty and this essentially $18,000 is something that the taxpayers are going to have to foot.
Okay, anything else there? No. Okay, go ahead.
When you scan the license, when the police officer pulls someone over, scans their license, does that bring up their, like, record, like if they've had other arrests or suspended license?
No, no, you have to, they would have to manually go in and pull that from like the state police record check or that data. So that's just another screen they would go to, basically. So if I were to take my license out right now, go out in the car and scan it, it's taking Mike Maisick, my date of birth, my address, and it's just populating those. That is, when I worked with our vendor who does the records management, that's what I made sure was, was being done, that. The coding, because the coding wasn't correct at first, so we had to go back numerous times, correct the coding to make sure it's just pulling that pertinent data specific to those motor vehicle stops. Now, it doesn't take the officer anything more than jumping over to another, because they're touchscreen computers, to another tab and running that person, because it'll ask you, hey, do you want to run their criminal history background?
Okay.
Then they can do it. But if, if there's no reason to do that, then they're not doing that, right? Because laws and things are changing for us as well in the way we conduct our jobs.
Oh, so they don't just do it as a matter of course?
No, no.
Okay.
So what'll happen is if, if, you know, if I, if I pull a car over right now and I throw, play it out there, you know, test 123, and it comes back that, you know, through dispatch, they'll get a hit because they have that whole full screen up in front of them. So if I had, you know, an active warrant or something like that, they would say, hey, he's got, you know, you know, he's got an active warrant for, you know, larceny or something like that. Then they would know right off the bat. But just from that initial scan, no. As the officer's checking, as they're going through it, and all it takes them, you'd be surprised how quick it is. Matter of like milliseconds, they can get that information kicked back to them, just a matter of touching over to another screen.
And then if this is approved, how long does it take to implement the system?
So from here, this would have to go to the Board of Finance.
And town meeting.
Right, and town meeting. So I already have, the vendor's already set up. They're waiting basically for me to say, go ahead. I'm trying to, you know, obviously, it's got to go through all these steps first. I'm just trying to get us to where we don't go outside of what the accepted quote is already at, because then I'm going to run into a little bit of an issue. So as soon as I'm able to place that order, obviously, there's, they have most of it on hand within a month or so. So the RMS vendor, I've already had them in contact. I've already contacted the state of Connecticut. I had to submit a form to them to, you know, put East Lime into that as we're literally only one of a handful of departments left in the state that don't utilize this system. That's what the state's goal is to get every active department, constabulary, onto, you know, any, any road officer to have this system in their vehicle. So we're just at the tail end of it.
Great, thank you.
Any questions?
No, it sounds like it's safer, more efficient, checked all the boxes, removes typos, decreases the amount of time at the stop, minimizes the amount of time you're at risk on the side of the road.
Yeah, because that's a big thing.
And the one thing I used to have to do when I was writing tickets at night was put the dome light on because I had to see what I was doing.
Right.
Yeah, I can't imagine it.
So which, well, right, so it's illuminating you and that's now blinding you because you're on the inside, so you can't really see on the outside. But they can from the outside see on the inside, just like your house at night.
They're trying to type and they're going to figure, yeah, no. Typos along.
Right, and much, much quicker to correct an error. So if I, you know, again, it's pulling all that data in, so I'm only really inputting a speed or an infraction, the type of infraction, most of that stuff's already built into dropdowns. So it's going to be just a matter of, A, getting used to it and just going, and it's, these guys with that system, the way it's already set up, it's nothing more than an additional screen that, most of that's already populated for them and it's only going to be a couple clicks and bam, printed out.
Okay, all right. We'll move to, move to appropriate and transfer $17,558 from CNRE Fund Revenue Account 32-04-400-405, parentheses, Connecticut DOT Grants Police Department, to account 32-25-400-700-402, parentheses, Connecticut DOT Grant Equipment Police Department, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. Note, this requires a town meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Carried unanimously. Mike, thank you for all your hard work on this, too.
Thank you very much.
For a whole lot of reasons. So, and then the last item, this was the one that we added to beginning. Both Spencer Klopp, he has been an alternate and John Smith has been a regular member. Mr. Smith has a little bit more, is able to make the meetings on a regular basis, Spencer is. So they both wanted a swap, so they resigned. And what we're doing is instead of Spencer, Mr. Klopp being an alternate will be a regular member and Mr. White, instead of being a regular member, will be an alternate. It doesn't have any impact on minority rep because they're both sitting there, too. have any impact on minority rep because they're both sitting there, too. And one of the reasons we moved this up so quickly is, once the resignation took effect, they have a meeting next Monday. And Spencer sat the first part of that meeting, so it's kind of imperative that he's, he's sitting on the board for the second half of the, the appeal. So, anyway, and we both thanked him for their desire to continue to serve as well, so.
Okay, yeah. Move to, to appoint Paul Spencer Clapp, 11 Chadwick Place, Niantic 06357, as a regular member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term to expire on January 5, 2026, and John Mitchell Smith of 2 Clark's Lane, Niantic 06357, as an alternate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term to expire on January 8, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Can they both be the same motion?
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah.
I mean, they both get sworn in separately.
Yeah.
I'm just reading two different sheets.
That's okay, yeah.
Okay. All those in favor, standing if I were saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried unanimously. Moving on to ex officio reports. Roseanne? Dan?
I have nothing to say.
Ann?
Well, Ann and I went to the Board of Education, presentation to Board of Finance.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think, I think our comments that, that, that the Board of Selectmen provided to the Board of Finance seem to be...
The Board of Ed.
Right. About the Board of Ed budget to the Board of Finance seem to be pretty foundational for some of the questioning and comments that they were making. So, that was helpful. There were quite a few persons in delegations. But we'll see where it all goes. But I was glad to, to be able to listen in. And the presentation was slightly different, different slides, some of it based upon us having asked some questions, too.
And the Board of Finance will start deliberations, I think, Monday night and then continue in the regular meeting on Wednesday.
Anything else?
No.
Any other, any, any other?
Any other things happening? Oh, the, I was thinking, in fact, our comments that we, that Sandy Anderson had put together, that we then sent to Board of Finance, if we could attach those to the minutes of this meeting, because I, I just think that we, we did what we said we were going to do at our, our previous meeting.
Oh, that's a good point.
So, I, I think for the public record to see that the members all had something, questions, comments, thoughts, that were compiled.
Okay, good point.
That I think were, were well done by us and useful to them, so.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
Yes, I attended the Historic Properties Commission meeting last night. And as you said before, Brookside Farm hired a part-time curator by the name of Anna Perch. And then also, on June 10th of 2023, Samuel Smith Farmstead will have their second annual Farmstead Vintage Tractor and Truck Show with live music, food, tours. And then on Saturday, August 12th, there's an annual dig at the Lee House Live Archaeological Dig, where they say they actually find a lot of different things right there. So, that was about it. The meeting for the, in the wetlands was canceled last night. So, that was about it.
Okay. Well, no meetings since our last meeting. Okay. Moving on from me, 161 Corridor Study. This is not the 161 Exit 74, and this is the one that talks basically from, basically pick up at Industrial Park Road and come down to 156. They're going to have that, a second presentation to the public on April 27th at 6:00 PM. This one will be at the middle school cafeteria slash auditorium. Again, April 27, 6:00 PM. I believe it's on our website. It's going to be on social media. And I think I put it on my website as well to make people aware of it. And this is where they really do appreciate the input because several of the people who came to the last presentation made comments, they incorporated those. So, the state is really the, the firm that's been hired by the state is really taking some input in. Speaking of the 161 corridor, Noble Gas Car Wash, you've noticed the old gas, the old car wash is gone, the fence is up, and they're really working hard in getting that done. So, we figured another month or so, probably a little longer than that, but it'll be up and working. Exits 161, Exit 74 interchange. We're down now to sporadic lane closures, but they are occurring. They keep saying they're going to let me know in advance. Sometimes the advance is, we're setting up the pattern now, type of thing. But they, they are trying hard. Their website, we got a, an email from them. They're hoping their website will be up within about 10 days from now, so people can go on to that on a regular basis to see what the plans are going forward. And, you know, and here again, as people pick up a nail or something along the line, they can file the complaint there or a claim. Also, they're looking to set up a presentation initially for business owners in the affected corridor, so they can have that presentation and a question and answer period. We're trying to nail down that. We're looking towards the last week of, of April, but that tends to be a busy week for, for the town, too, as well. So, that's going to be hard to do. And that will be followed by a second for the public. But here again, that'll probably, you know, in the early June timeframe, because May turns into such a busy time for us with the referendum and so forth like that in the town meeting. Niantic Theater is, Mr. Garci was here earlier today. All the permits have been issued, so that's looking, moving very well along. Contract negotiations, we've come to an agreement with the dispatches for a three-year contract. We'll be bringing that back, probably not at the next meeting, but the following one, because town, our labor attorney and their union reps are going to make sure everything's done in that. And we'll bring that forward for, to be approved by the Board of Selectmen, probably not next meeting, but the one after that. Water and Sewer, at our last meeting, which is why, Ann, thank you for covering the finance meeting for me. We approved 75,000 gallons a day for the Niantic project. They're talking behind the Trachis, on the Trachis property. They've got a long way to go. They're just now, they have to go to zoning and planning and in the wetlands and so forth like that. So, it's a long way to go. And here again, as we pointed out, water and sewers only was, do we have the capacity? And, you know, there are a lot of ticket holders, but they're years away from coming on. So, the, with one exception, the, the board was very comfortable in giving them the 75,000 down, 75,000 gallons, not dollars. Didn't give them any money. And here again, if this does, it could benefit us, too, because they'll pay for the sewer extension from basically just the other side of Asagachi Hills Road all the way down to Main Street. So, as time goes on and we do start getting that additional capacity, some of the merchants and people that have been hoping that time will be able to do it. So, they're, and again, that cost will be picked up by the developer. Distress Summer Secretary Grant, we've already talked about that, $5,000. Some retirements, Bill Boyer is retiring, submitted his, a police officer. He is going to retire August 30th. Kathy Wilson has retired, a very nice event for her a couple of weeks ago at the Senior Center. And her replacement, Kristin Karamanica, has been named. She was here as a program director several years ago. This was her dream to always come back. So, Roseanne and I had the pleasure of interviewing her just before the, the offer was made. So, we're looking forward to her coming on. The Merrill League Gala was the other night, Sunday, and they raised, profited about $40,000. So, very nice job by everyone involved there. Month was the, the, our Women's Month was last month. So, Janet Valen, who owns Rosa Negra, decided she wanted to sponsor an event to recognize some women in town who have been very, contributed to the community in, in many ways and that. So, we came up with several names. Rita Rivera, who is, she's with Main Street, she's with Miracle League, she helps out, she works at the Children's Museum. She basically does everything. If there's anything that needs to be done, every time there's a ribbon cutting, she's the one that organizes it. She's just at everything and very much does not seek any recognition for it. Melissa Victor, who is a lifelong resident and spent basically 38 years as a member of the, as an EMT with Flanders Fire Department, and then also a driver for the, at the Senior Center, to where, you know, people used to request, oh, which bus is Melissa driving today? So, someone who's donated to the community. Pat Payne, Patricia Payne, who runs, is the, the head of Care and Share, and all she ever does is say, thank you for all you do for me, us at Care and Share, when they're the ones doing it for everybody. Rita Fokitis, who is the owner of Village Cafe, constantly donating and helping members of the community. Same thing with Rena Powers, the, another person recognized. Blue Door, Carol Morelli, the Public Trust, Registrar, just someone again involved in the community. And Elizabeth Urbina and Lena Agudelo, they're people who immigrated to the, this country and chose East Lime to be their home. And they told their stories that night. It was just really nice to see how they've enriched and enhanced our community by their presence and this, you know, so thrilled to be there. And then Joyce Bouvier was also recognized for all her contributions in the area of art. So, a very nice evening. And we thank Janet for sponsoring this and we thank all them for all they do. And there's countless more people to recognize. One of which we're going to do right now, that this person doesn't even know it yet. I got this today. Each year on the first Friday of May, the New London County Bar Association partners with the American Bar Association to host a local Law Day celebration. Commemorated annually, Law Day is an opportunity to discuss different aspects of law and its role in society. This year's theme, set by the American Bar Association, is Cornerstones of Democracy: Civics, Civility, and Collaboration. The New London County Bar Association Board of Directors has nominated Roseanne Hardy as this year's honoree and recipient of the Liberty Bell Award. This is an award given to an individual whom the board deems appropriate, given the theme of the event and the individual's presence in New London County. The board is impressed with her level of connectivity to the area, her distinguished career as an educator, and her work as a member of the Board of Selectmen for the Town of East Lime. Roseanne, congratulations. And there'll be a, you'll be recognized on Friday, May 5th, at 9:00 AM at Norwich Inn Spa. And I'll give you, I'll get this, all the information to you. They couldn't contact you, so they had to contact me. I figured, oh, I'm not...
That's bad.
Well, you were here today and I, I guess I forgot to tell you. But anyway, so.
Thank you very much.
So, anyway, that concludes this report communications. Any public comment?
I would like to say that I was very happy to drive on Flanders Road the past couple of days and see the water tank is actually being painted.
Oh, I, I should have done that, too. Yeah. And, and it looks like the cost is going to be a little less than anticipated. So, we're getting there. And the inside was found not to be as bad as we thought either. So...
Well, that's good news.
So, so good news all around there. So, here again, maybe some more our money coming back. Yes, who knows? So, okay. If there's no public comment, so there's no Selectmen's response, an executive session to talk about Asagachi Hills and Hathaway Farms.
Move to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing real estate matters. East Lime Land Trust, Asagachi Hills. The board is entering into executive session at 8:35 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We're in executive session. Okay.
Okay. My motion. Okay. The board had entered into executive session at 8:35 PM and we have returned at 9:08 PM and no formal votes were taken.
Okay.
Move to adjourn the regular meeting of April 5th, 2023, at 9:08 PM.
Is there a second? Second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you and have a good night.